All right, we're about to start the meeting. Good evening. Welcome to the November sixth, two thousand and five town of Ankrum planning board meeting. It's noted special meeting, but this is our regular meeting. There will be a special meeting on November nineteenth, which is a Wednesday. Can you take attendance, please?
Bill Heck.
Here.
Tom Grandolo.
Here.
Aaron Robertson.
Here.
Jill Croco.
Here.
Palmer Irving.
Here.
Jessica Lovelace. Not. Christine Brown. Not, and Sarah Porter.
Is Christine on Zoom?
On, yeah.
Okay, she said she might. She is?
Or Jessica?
No, I don't see her, though.
Okay, because Christine said she might Zoom in. Anyway. Sarah correspondence?
So we got letters back from the fire company for both Homeland and Solar.
Yes, I saw that.
And then the rest of the correspondence came this week. There were three that came about the solar project and three that came about cell tower. They are all in the correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Conflict, anybody have a conflict? Don Tesh has reclusive himself.
Don.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. Don Tesh has reclusive himself from this application, so he's not here, so. That's fine, okay? So there's only one. Oh, minutes, I missed that. That's okay.
So these are the twenty ninth, and these are from the sixth, third, ninth.
Question, we had the work session, we kept minutes, do we need to approve the minutes from the work session? Okay, all right. Let's start with the October ninth, our regular meeting in October. Has everybody read the minutes? Any changes, corrections, comments? Hearing none, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the October ninth minutes?
Make the motion to approve the October ninth minutes?
Second.
All in favor? Bye. They're approved, okay. We had a work session, which I believe was though a week ago this past Wednesday. It was open to the public with no comment. We had a about a two hour, two and a half hour discussion about both applications. Anybody have any comments on the minutes from the special from the work session? Okay. Can I get a motion?
Make your motion to rule the October twenty ninth minutes?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, so the minutes of all approval, okay. We have one application on this evening, Ankrum PV LLC. The special use in a site plan for the solar farm. Unfortunately, we've been waiting on a check which we have not yet received to fund our two additional consultants, a landscape architect and a visual person that would review the 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 visual impact on the project and assist us in making that decision. So we don't have anything on that front, but does the applicant have anything additional they want to add before we go to the public? Is it, is it new information?
No. Some of the new or comments.
How long? Okay, we're okay doing that? Yeah, okay, why don't you go ahead and do it?
Well, hold on, Mike, do we have it?
Yep.
That's good. That's, that's fine for me. Yeah, people can see it. That's perfect. Okay. My name is Sierra Hopkins. I'm a project developer at Rick Energy. I'm here to represent the Ankrum Solar Project. I have a couple of colleagues with me tonight. Robert Corolo is Director of Development at Rick Energy, and Jim Mascato is with Young Summer, our legal counsel. I believe we have our civil engineers from Wendell on the call as well. So let's click through the next page. Thank you. The first thing I wanted to do was kind of go through the timeline. We realized that as of the end of this month, the application will have been in front of the board for a full year. And so that's a lot of submissions to date, a lot of revisions, a lot of comments, and we understand that it's a lot to try to remember back to all of that time. So we wanted to kind of go through some of the materials and make sure that we all have a good understanding of what's been submitted and the types of comments that have already been addressed. So just at a high level, we did a pre-application meeting in June of two thousand and twenty four. We submitted the application in November ahead of the December two thousand and twenty four meeting. The project was referred to the Z E O, the zoning enforcement officer, last November. We met with the zoning enforcement officer on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty four, and reviewed the full submission package to confirm code compliance. This was a line by line code analysis and a page turn of the entire application, which he checked off as meeting the requirements of the code. We then, he had a couple of comments, so we did update the application materials based on those comments that was submitted in January of this year. We received the first round of comments from the town's planner in February. And then the county planning board recommended approval of the project in March of this year. We then had the first public hearing back in April of this year. We've been in public hearings pretty much ever since then. We received comments from the town's engineer in early April. We offered a few site visits in April as well. I think Joe attended one of those, and there was no attendance at the second. We had the next public hearing in May. We offered a third site visit in the beginning of May at the request of the planning board and some of the landowners. So we met at one of the landowners' properties, and that was attended, we believe, by Aaron Palmer, Christine, and also those landowners, and that walked the property line and saw the view from from that landowner's house. We then updated application materials again based on the planner and engineering comments in May. We made a formal response to both of those letters addressing each of their comments as well. The public hearings then have continued. We had a community meeting separate from the public hearing in July. We met with the chairman and the towns council in September to try to go over the application materials and get an understanding of the process and how to move forward. We submitted a formal response to a Publix letter and their V I A that was submitted. So we responded to that by the deadline of October twenty third. And then there was, of course, the planning board workshop, October twenty ninth. We received the letter approval of approval from the fire chief on October thirty first, and then we received some written comments from the planning board two days ago. So that's the timeline. So there's been a lot of submissions and a lot of materials, and we understand that it's difficult to keep track of, so I wanted to try to highlight some of the materials, particularly around what has been coming up in questions and comments. So next slide, please. This is a full list of what the application materials are. Again, we understand it's a lot in the basic kind of bare bones of the application. There's already a lot of materials and adding on top of that revisions and comments is hard to keep track. So the first three are the application forms from the town. So those have been a standardized form that the town uses for site plan, special use, and building permits. The only thing that has changed over time in those specific forms would be the limits of disturbance. When we first submitted the application, the limits of disturbance were nine point nine acres. And through revisions, we've been able to bring that down to nine point four acres. That does meet the requirements of the code, that the array be less than ten acres. And I want to be clear here, too, that the nine point four acres includes the entire project, the entire limits of disturbance, the array, the fence line, the entire road, the trees, and everything that we're proposing a screening as well. So the actual acreage of panels is really only about six acres. Next on the list, the letter of agent, that's just showing that the landowner that we have a lease with is a part of the process and approves that we're submitting the application on their behalf. On the project description, largely just a high level overview of the project that hasn't changed. The Seeker FEAF Part One and Part One supplement, I'll go over in a bit more detail later. The Ag Data Statement hasn't changed at all either. That simply states that the parcel is currently used for farming and that parcels around it, it identifies which specific parcels are also used for farming because it is an ag district. The site plans and the landscaping plans, I'll go through in more detail later. Same with the equipment specification sheet and some of the other ones on there. Some things that we haven't really received a lot of comments on are the rare, threatened, and endangered species analysis, the SHIPO consultation, the wetland delineation, and the driveway permits. There are no wetlands on the site. We did not have any rare, threatened, or endangered species flagged in our reports, and there's no archaeological concern. So those were submitted as part of the application. There largely has not been questions related to those, so. Next, please.
Are you going to keep, are you going to stay within your?
We'll pick it up. So the FEAF Part One and Part One supplement is part of Seeker, and that's really to help work through parts two and three of Seeker. So this has things like what types of government approvals are required, whether or not there are hazardous materials involved and things like that. So that's a really good resource to use when going through parts two and three. It also talks about the construction hours, which I know has been a question a couple of times as well. Next. The equipment specification sheet is another thing that is a good reference to use. It outlines all of the types of materials that are used in the panels. It shows that what we're proposing does have an anti-reflective coating on it as well. So that question has kind of come up a lot, so I wanted to point you in that direction. Next. That's okay. Okay, now we're getting into the utility poles, which has been more of a question as of late. One of the things that we submitted in the initial application was the electrical three-line diagram as well as our interconnection agreement with the utility. So the three-line diagram shows what is going to be included in the poles. The question of late has been why are there so many poles, or why are there poles as opposed to pad-mounted equipment? And recently, there's been a question about can that equipment go underground? That type of equipment cannot be put underground. So they have things like the reclosers, the utility revenue meters. That's equipment that cannot be put below ground. The utility needs access to go and view those things. So that either has to be on poles or on pads. Those are the only options for those, that type of equipment. And so I just wanted to show that, you know, that's, that's what's, what we've been proposing from the start, and this electrical three-line diagram was included in our interconnection application with Central Hudson. If you go to the next slide, this is some screenshots from our utility interconnection agreement that was also submitted as part of our application to the board. This shows that the utility has already preliminarily signed off on the design. So one of the requirements of the code is that all electric utility lines that can be put underground be underground. We have shown that on our application from the beginning. And then the other line of the code talks about the utility interconnection equipment meeting the standards and requirements of the utility. So that is what this demonstrates, is that we've already submitted an application to the utility, and they have preliminarily signed off on the design that we've submitted. So that would include all of those poles and the equipment on them. Some of the site plans, I put a lot of slides on this, but we can run through this a little bit quicker. There's a lot of details called out in here that kind of helps show code compliance. So the L O D being under ten acres, the height, the slopes, there's topography lines on there, so you can see how we're complying with not developing on slopes greater than fifteen percent. And particularly the setbacks. One of the things I wanted to mention with setbacks is that when the town board considered putting the solar law in, they considered what setbacks would be appropriate for this type of project, and they landed on fifty feet from the front and a hundred feet on the sides and the rear. And I wanted to demonstrate that we're well exceeding that on all areas. So that was something that was deemed acceptable for them to, for this type of project. And at the time when that law was under review, there would have been public hearing and comments accepted on that. This just is a detail that shows where the callouts are for the underground electric line and where they have to come overhead with the poles. I think we've kind of talked about that before, but I just wanted to point out that we do specifically have those details on the plans and compliance with the code. More details about the fire department knox box and the fencing. Now that we have kind of a more official confirmation that the fire chief has reviewed the plans, I think that's pretty well settled. The landscaping plans is another thing that's come up a lot. When we initially submitted the application, we had proposed one section of screening along the fence line of the array. Based on comments from the board and working with landowners, we've added screening to two additional places. So one is on the rear property line specifically for a private residence, and the other is around the utility poles, which was the latest request for additional screening from the board was to try to shield some of the visual impacts of the poles. So we did add that, and one of the things I wanted to comment on here was that I think in the visual impact analysis that was submitted by some members of the public, not all of these screening details were included. So I wanted to point that out specifically. The landscaping plans also detail maintenance of the trees. I know there was a question recently from NAN about adding stuff into the O and M plan regarding maintenance of the trees, which we're happy to add lines into that, but I did want to call out that it shows in these, in the plans, the site plans themselves, how the trees will be maintained and cut and stuff like that. I think we can skip through a lot of these sections. I think by now the board has probably seen a lot of the visuals. If you could that one, oh, that one, no, sorry. Next. That one's a good one, thank you. So this is view four. This is off of eighty-two. What I wanted to highlight here is that on the left is the existing condition, and on the right is the proposed or the simulated view, and this demonstrates where the entrance and the access road will be, the poles, and the additional screening that we place there. So I think that's a good one to show that our simulations with vegetation, I think that's showing growth between five and ten years, how well they will screen the poles. This one is a good one as well, because this is from Cotton Tail Road. That's the only locally designated scenic viewpoint. And so this, if it looks far away on the right side, that's because it is. It's one point two miles away from the site, and it's, you know, really just too far to be able to see that driving or walking or standing still. I think you can skip through, there we go. Something that's come up recently was the decommissioning plan as well. There were some questions about Nise Dam guidance. I wanted to point out that we have a section in the decommissioning plan that talks about how we will comply with the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets guidelines on decommissioning a project like this, and that will also be decommissioning anything like the road and the proposed screening in accordance with the landowners' preferences. And on the next page, this came up in one of the more recent public hearings as well, the decommissioning estimate and bond. The code requirements is one hundred and fifty percent of the estimate, and I've highlighted that on the bottom. The engineer did review that estimate. He said it was in line with what he had seen before. I think there was a comment asking the town's legal counsel to review that. We haven't heard any comments about that yet, but I wanted to call out that we detail specifically a lot of information about what the materials cost and what the labor costs and the formulas for how we get to that number, so. The O and M plan, this was another thing that came up. Like I said, we're happy to add some lines about maintaining the screening, but I just wanted to call out that there will be twenty-four hour monitoring remotely, and maintenance is largely as needed, particularly around mowing and snow removal, but the in-person checks on the equipment are mostly between once or twice a year. This is a screenshot of the zoning enforcement officer's verification that the proposed use is consistent with the zoning district, and it is an allowable use. This is the letter from the county planning board, just calling attention that they did recommend approval, and some of the things that they considered in their approval was community character and visual impacts. This was one of the letters from the planner. This kind of shows how it's difficult to remember back to everything that's been submitted. One of the letters submitted in February asked about the access road and whether or not it would impact the existing agricultural use. We responded to that question in May, and then we received a letter in October with largely the same question, so. Just wanted to call out that it's, it is a lot of materials and it's hard to remember, but we're trying to make sure that everybody has all of the information. This was a comment letter from the engineer we received in April. We responded in May. We have not received any comments from him since. I think it came up in the workshop at the planning board, whether or not the engineer reviewed the SWIP and not showed that it did. And then this was most recently the fire letter for emergency access. And he said that he would approve or not oppose the project as long as we are in compliance with New York State Fire Code. We reference international fire code in our site plans, but we reviewed them both and they align. Those are just examples of other letters that we've submitted as the applicant. That's pretty much it. Sorry, that was more than five minutes.
Okay, that's it? Okay. Board have any questions at this time of what just went through? No one?
When you said that the poles, the connections can't be underground, but they can be on pads. And are we pursuing that?
Yeah, we've tried. We demonstrated our, we've reached out, whether or not we fully reply, depending on necessarily more than a year. That's all that we have to go on. These are already of where we took them and have it all, so.
There's two additional topics on that.
I have an actual picture of an installation that I came across over here. If anything can be done with this on pads, they look like high tension currents. Obviously. I don't know if this is Central Hudson or not. It was.
Yeah, I can't speak to the project. I don't know how many megawatts.
But it's exactly what you show on your plan.
Generally, that does look like a typical pole lineup, standard equipment. That would be included, but in addition to what Sierra had mentioned, in which, right, this, this utility lineup is going to be driven by the utility company. Right? So from a practical standpoint, in my past life, I was a civil engineer. Did a lot of design work for solar companies and then also municipal review. I would say we have requested to the utility, if switching to pad-mounted is viable. They haven't provided us a definitive response. We're continuously following up. Please trust me, if that is an option, we definitely want to pursue that because we don't want to see your lovely faces as much as we love coming back here. The other two things that are competing on this site, near the entrance, the grade where these pads would go is twenty-five percent grade. So we have a substantial amount of grading for entrance to meet DOT requirements. To put pads on a twenty-five percent grade is, I wouldn't say impossible, but it is going to be very difficult to achieve. So again, I don't know what the utility would say. I'm just sure they are considering that.
There's nothing here of any magnitude. It looks like a couple of transformers. They maybe step down or step up or whatever. There's not a lot of equipment here.
The, the pads are significantly more, the pad-mounted equipment is sizable. It's not going to be the same as what you're seeing on the pole-mounted equipment. It's encased in cabinets. I can provide some samples from other projects if you'd like, just to see like generally what it looks like.
But we can certainly landscape around that. Yeah.
They, their standard utility poles, they're probably around forty feet. They're not going to be seventy or a hundred feet, but I can provide some imaging, I would say.
Okay.
Just to give you a reference. And then the third item, I think also that's going to be a consideration from the utility. We have gotten unanimous feedback now from NISEG and National Grid. Yet from Central Hudson, but we'll see if they give us a response back. That transitioning from pole to pad-mounted is considered a material change and would require withdrawing the application and resubmitting entirely, which would restart the process and also lose queue position for the project, so.
I don't understand that. How do they? I don't understand that.
That's, that's just the information that we've been provided by the utilities. So they consider that a material change to the design if they were to say, yes, it's viable.
Make that decision?
No, no, I'm saying. The, yeah, the utility, the utility for the interconnection design. The interconnection, they consider that a material change to the the calculations and their analysis to safely interconnect to their equipment. So that would mean that it would have to go through a whole new restudy with the interconnect. Correct. Correct. So that, that would come into the viability of switching over. Again, this is from NISEG and National Grid. We haven't gotten that formal response from Central Hudson. Usually it's unanimous across the boards. They all stick together and, but I just wanted to let you know. And then lastly, maybe the fourth item. The code does say all underground wiring shall be placed underground. From the array where we are generating electricity all the way to the interconnection equipment is installed underground per the code. Per submission, we always have shown it like that at the, at that applicant's expense. It would be cheaper to go overhead. We have no issue going underground to meet the code. If we knew that, and there was clear diction in the code that specified that all equipment must be pad-mounted, we would have submitted knowing that. The code does not say that in any way. The electrical equipment is a completely separate entity. It's a it's technologically different, and as Sierra mentioned, it cannot be buried underground. It can be pole-mounted or pad-mounted. The wiring that we have is underground. The equipment is separate from that, and it does have to come above ground at some point, pad-mounted or pole-mounted, either which way. So I did just want to say as far as the overall code compliance, there's nothing that speaks to the interconnection equipment. So, you know, if that was in there, our initial submission, I am sure we would have accounted for that, and we would have submitted to the utility with that information.
Well, this board is reviewing the application, and we have a certain amount of discretion about what we may or may not want to see, so.
Correct, which, which is.
So it's a planning board. It's not, you know, everything isn't written down.
No, no, definitely. And, and that's why, I mean, we, we did provide the plantings along the western edge of those poles. I will be completely candid. We understand it's not going to screen them a hundred percent. That's, it's not possible, I would say. What it will do is provide a visual break as you're traveling down the roadway at fifty-five miles per hour. You're going to have something breaking up that, that visual. So we did provide that. We did provide the visual assessment with a simulation, and obviously we'll await feedback from the landscape architect, but we, we do understand it is concerning of Nate efforts to screen that.
Anybody else in the board, any other questions? You know.
Until we work with NAN.
Yeah, I mean, we're at, we've completed section two of the A F. Need to get to do three, and three, we're waiting on the the visual. the visual consultant. Absolutely.
The one question was about the, how residents can obtain credits for their utility bills. Can you explain that?
So a couple of thoughts here. One, we definitely understand that is a concern of the public, and we can provide a more formal written response on that. Just for here tonight, I would say we are a generating facility. We produce the electricity. We, once that goes into the grid, that is now the utility's electricity.
We understand that. If you could help us explain to the general public how they can access the credits, that's, that's all we're asking.
Sure.
Asking if you'd do it.
No, no, and, and I would say it's through a subscription program. Typically, community members will subscribe to the project. There is going to be a capped amount of people within the community that can subscribe to this project. The subscription will provide a discount on their electricity bill. I would say as far as who is used for the subscription outreach, there's different companies that they subcontract and communicate with to reach out to landowners. It's an entire business in and of itself. I can try and reach out to some companies and get some information that they would be willing to pass.
Yeah, I mean, do you do it at this point? Do you do it when it's being constructed? Do you do it when it's done? I mean, that would be helpful.
Typically, the outreach happens, I would say, at the beginning of construction, just to get subscribers. They want to fill it up. If it's not filled within a certain window, they open the subscription up to folks outside of the community. And then another thing I do want to say, as much as we would like to, I guess, illustrate the benefits of a project, or, you know, how, how it can help the community. The, the truth is, there is no requirement that the project must provide benefits to the community. I think it's, it is a consideration. And I, while we feel that there are benefits from the project, I do understand people are going to be opposed to it, and we may not be able to convince them that the benefits are tangible or offset the, the, you know, impacts of the project in their perspective. So I do just want to say, right, we, we can run through the benefits. I think we've done it a couple of times. And we'd be happy to do that, but as far as convincing everyone and making them feel on board, it's not, you know.
We understand it's out of your control, but whatever assistance you can give us in providing the documentation for the residents would be helpful. I know you don't determine the rates. I understand that. What's that? Yes, just leave it.
Just so you know, that is in our law. That established so that residents of the town of Ankrum can access the energy produced by the facility.
Right, and, and it will be. I'm just saying, as far as I, I've heard a lot of previous comments as, well, that's not a benefit, or it doesn't, it doesn't offset the project.
I understand. I was just correcting. You said it wasn't in the law. But it is.
As far as the, the distribution of the energy and the accessibility to the community, that is the type of project, and that is what we're applying with, correct?
Anything else?
I don't want to go to the. I don't have anything else, mostly from our workshops that we came up with.
Is anybody from the public like to speak? And can we keep it brief? And let's not repeat everything that's already been said because we are very cognizant of the concerns. If you have some new information, that's great. So.
Well, I'll speak, but I can't pronounce to be as brief as you want it to be. Larry and Les have actually given me their minutes, but I appreciate your time, your investment as volunteers. My name is Matthew Tuck and I'm on Cotton Hill. And I also want to be very clear that I'm not against solar development. So today I drove roads within Ankrum that are unquestionably anchored in the very center of our town's revered landscape. I've been doing this since my father introduced this to the area in the 1980s, and especially after we found a home in Ankrum over a decade ago. Any of these roads bear witness to the historic Millerhurst Farm or recognized national bicentennial farm, but we all know this fact. We also know it unquestionably helps define Ankrum. This prized view shed is now the subject of a proposed industrial solar array by Rick Energy. Thankfully, this planning board has seen fit to have a third party assess the merits of this visual analysis, submitted by Rick Energy and another submitted by professionals hired by Ankrum residents. What I can tell you is that illustrations provided by Rick Energy, where fields of green adjacent to Millerhurst are paired with solar array installations that were also green, do not do justice to Rick's transparency or our collective intelligence. What I cannot tell you is why Rick's approach to this entire project has been one where they offer little, but promise so much. These industrial solar arrays won't be green in color, and neither will the long, snaking industrial road permanently installed to service this complex. And yes, solar panel glare is real too. None of this will be hidden from the naked eye when the leaves are off entirely, as they are for over six months a year. And yes, any number of residents will see the solar array with leaves full on too. We call that summertime. The drive I took today reflected this in a manner that is more stark than I can describe. Pat's Road and Route 82 are ground zero for this visual impairment fallout. Skyline and Pool Hill suffered collateral damage too. So I ask you, why wouldn't Rick Energy be more forthright about this visual fallout from the very beginning? Significantly, why wouldn't Rick be forthcoming about their entire application? Rick, Rick's website claims they have completed hundreds of projects throughout the world. Alarmingly, in our Ankrum, inconclusive or inaccurate statements have been made by them in a business they know cold. So let's be honest. Our utility bills will not change materially. Ankrum will not benefit financially from the project in any manner. In fact, lower real estate taxes by those affected by the project will be a drag on your town coffers, our town coffers. This lost revenue certainly won't be made up by Rick Energy, and let's not forget Millerhurst. How will their business be impacted? At the center of this visual analysis is how our historic farming community can move forward. While Rick is shilling their project for a long, for a foreign corporation, Ankrum will be left holding and looking at their industrial solar array for the next 30 years. Respectfully for your time and effort, this is not the right move forward. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Raya Mallett from McCarthy Finger, the law firm. I represent a number of residents in the community. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I have to tell you, I had some notes, but I'm a little thrown off by the presentation by Rick tonight, so I'm going to have to readjust. They came up here just now and said, this has taken too long. It's been a year with no sense of responsibility. As to, they said they have an attorney. They say they have a project manager. Your law is very clear what is required for a community scale solar, and they have not even tried to meet it. What you just heard from Mr. Tuck was that there were some misrepresentations to this board. We know that in February of 2025, in response to your planner's question about whether or not this would be visible from public roads, they said it would not be visible from any public vantage points. They also, over a year ago, in their EAF, said it would not be visible from the public roads. So you were operating under false information. They did not provide the necessary visuals. What I heard them saying was because they have gotten it approved with wires outside with telephone poles, because that's already signed, they can't change it now without some, without withdrawing their application. I actually think they should withdraw their application. And, and try again if they want to, but this time follow your law, because that's what's missing here. So there was also a letter that went up in the portal yesterday that seemed, it was unsigned. I know from watching and attending your work session virtually that I believe it's from the applicant, the unsigned letter. Is that true, or is it just?
Do you know?
There's a letter questioning, it was against our submission in September 2025 that I, I just want to address. If it's from them, it's kind of an odd submission because again, it's not a signed letter.
Around for a while. That was the one I questioned whether it was complete because it kind of just ended one of the.
And it was submitted October 23rd, correct? I mean, okay, well, I will, I will address it as well as what happened tonight. I, I wasn't going to submit anything to you all without the two weeks' notice, but the issue here is where we are right now is that they, the application has to comply, as you all know, with not only the solar law, but also with the special use permit law and the site plan law. Your own, they, their application right now, they have not followed the law. So just, I'm sorry, I threw us off a little bit. They just came up here and said, your code doesn't say about wires, but I do have your code right here, and it says on section 4C, C4, any onsite power lines shall be underground installations. But they signed a contract a year ago or more, and they're asking you to honor that because it's already approved by Central. That's not the role of Ankrum. They have not even taken the steps necessary in, from the beginning to make sure the wires and the poles were underground as required by your law. We know in, they complain that this has been going on for 12 months, but it wasn't until a month ago that they acknowledged that the arrays would be visible from public views, from public vantage points. It wasn't until, I don't even know if they still are taking responsibility for neighbors' properties, until this fall, they were saying it didn't matter what 450 Woods Road was saying.
450.
Court, and what some of the adjoining properties were saying, even though it's three times in your law that they have to make sure there was no glare. Your, your own planner has identified that in the October 8th minutes. Section 5E7M and N all require them to make sure that there is no glare and screening for adjoining properties. I don't understand in the letter where they said, we didn't pay attention to screening, planting trees that don't screen is not screening. They have an obligation under your law to have maximum screening, either to avoid the view, which is very significant, or maximum screening within five years. But the representative just came up here and said, look at that picture, five to 10 years. That's not the law. Your law says up to five years they have.
Can I just?
Maximize screen.
That's why we hired a landscape consultant to review, and we're waiting on the visual response from our consultant. So we haven't committed to anything, and if it's not what they say it is, we're going to deal with it.
I appreciate that. I guess my point is, if they're complaining that it's 12 months, and they have still not even stood up here tonight and answered your questions and complied or show how they're going to comply, then you have the power to deny it. You have the power to say, we're not going to issue this permit because you haven't done it. At minimum, I understand you're getting a visual impact assessment and independent consultant. We have demonstrated that there will be a significant visual impact. We have demonstrated, Scott Harkin is attending virtually, you can ask him questions directly, from our study that thousands of acres will have a viewpoint, and you just heard Mr. Tuck show. SEACRA requires for type 1 action, there's a presumption that an environmental impact statement is needed if one, if there is one potential impact. We have shown you that there will be a potential significant adverse impact. And so at minimum, there needs to be full SEACRA, if not outright denial. I do want to address what was said in the letter. The applicant in the letter seemed unclear why we were focused on the town's comprehensive plan. I want to remind you also what your planner, Nan Stoltenberg, said on October 8th, that how come the overwhelming emphasis Ankrum has placed in maintaining community character and the scenic qualities of the town in both the comprehensive plan and the zoning law. And your special use permit law requires that the comprehensive plan be evaluated. That is why we addressed it. Your special use permit application requires that in the letter, it requires that the location and size of the use, in this case, the solar arrays are compatible, not with possible uses, I was indicating in the letter where somebody seemed to cut and paste your code, but with the neighborhood in which it is located. And it, and the special use permit also says that it must be compatible with the rural and small-town character of Ankrum. The representative just stood up here from Rick and flashed on the screen the county, the Columbia County letter saying, oh, and we have our letter from the 239M referral. I'd like to remind you what the county letter said. The Columbia County Planning Board made clear, quote, that this, I'm sorry, this proposed solar array, quote, may be in stark contrast to the bucolic nature of the existing site and surrounds. And the only reason why they didn't deny it, why they said you could move forward, because they based their finding on the false representation by Rick that it wouldn't be visible from anywhere, that it was in the rear of the property, because they said that. And they said that this planning board must make a determination regarding the adequacy of the proposed mitigation measures, which we know are none. The intent of your solar law, the intent of the actual community solar law is that it shall not detract. That's what it says in foresee from the scenic qualities and rural character of your landscape. I think it's pretty clear from both the neighbors who have, who have testified from all of you who live here and drive around, that it will be visible, that it's not in the right place. So if you are not going to deny it, we would ask that there be a full SEACRA environmental impact statement required, because that would at least provide this board with a full study of all the places in the town where it is visible, whether or not mitigation is even possible. A couple of other things I just want to point out based on what was just said. The representative also said that regarding the underground installation that, I'm sorry, that many of these things recently came up. Okay, the underground installation is in your law. The requirements for neighboring properties are in your law. None of this just came up. They just didn't focus on it until they were forced to focus on it two months ago, when they started admitting that it was visible from the public. I want to invite you to ask Mr. Harkin questions. Again, he is online when you go to the visual. They, the representatives from Rick keep saying that they've provided screening to the adjoining neighbors. We have submitted to you, and Mr. Harkin can explain it more fully, in the Harkin report with a diagram. It is diagram four. Site four profile, though we don't have a page number, for 450 Woods Court, demonstrating that from the backyard, even with the screening they are proposing, not just one solar array will be visible, but both the upper and lower will be visible from the adjoining property, which is completely contrary to your code. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Kim?
Kim. You have. Could you explain to the board what this section of the code and for the audience? Ian's.
Which section?
M.
M?
I think it's being misconstrued.
So the question that you asked Chairman was what this section, this says the solar energy system, including all proposed structure and all site infrastructure shall be located and maximally screened within five years in such a way as to avoid or minimize visual impacts as viewed from public roads and highways and other public sites or existing residential dwellings located on contiguous sites.
What does the word contiguous mean?
Contiguous would mean adjacent, next door.
Touching property.
Yes.
So thousands of acres out there isn't what that says.
Well, in this case, it would be that it would have to be from the contiguous, whatever be the contiguous properties. Typically contiguous means.
Right.
Next door.
I got it. I just wanted to clarify that.
I, I'm just going to clarify what I, if I was misunderstood, 450 Woods Court is a, am I saying it correctly? Is in fact a contiguous site, and so we have a diagram.
Agreed.
The point of the thousand acres is not, is a separate issue. It has to do with significant adverse impact, according to SECRAS. All we have to do, all you need to do is find that there's one potential significant adverse impact in order to require an EIS, an environmental impact statement for a type 1 action. We already know that for 450 Woods Court, there is one very significant potential significant adverse impact. The other one from the Harkin aerial viewshed analysis demonstrates that there are thousands of acres where this will be visible. Whether or not that that is going to be a significant impact, the first thing this board would want to do is identify all of the potential areas in the town they'll be visible from for most of the year when the leaves are off. And then after that, determine whether, how significant an impact that is. But the possibility of the impact is why there needs to be a full EIS or an outright denial. Thank you.
That's what I am struggling with. What is an impact? Am I seeing something through a hole in some trees? Or am I seeing the entire array? And that's what we're waiting on our consultant to help us understand.
So it's an impact that, that this board determines based on the values of this community. So that is why in our submission, we shared with you the importance of the scenic view. Remember how the 2019 comprehensive plan made clear that we want Ankrum to look the same in 2030 as it does in 2019? The scenic view here, as your consultant found in its both of her letters, is so highly valued by this town's comprehensive plan in the zoning, in the site plan, in the special use permit, as well as the town's solar law, that the view shed is so important that the impact on the view shed in the town of Ankrum could very well be a different measure than the view shed of solar in New York City. Right? So that is, it's what it, how much the impact is for this town, given how much it values the, the view shed and how important that is, as your natural resource study showed, to the economy here. There's a sentence about how the view shed is important to the economy, to the way of life here, to what scenic, what scenic Ankrum is to everybody. So that's how you determine impact.
And I just wanted to clarify, so regarding your question for impact, as you know, as you had already indicated, you've already gone through part two. You have identified visual is an impact that is moderate to large. And what Nan Stoltenberg will be helping you with, once we get those visual analysis, is going through that, the magnitude, the scope, that's when she's going through that part three. So there's a, an impact has been identified. The next step is it's determined if it's a significant impact that may require an EIS, as Ms. Mallett has suggested.
We're waiting on the information.
Yeah, once you get the information from the consultant reports, that's going to answer, I think, a lot.
It's going to be helpful, that's why. Well, had something to add or say or? The gentleman back there.
I appreciate that.
Okay, all right. If you're the elected representative, go ahead.
I think a lot of comments brought up throughout that point. One thing I do just want to touch on regarding the compliance with visual, there's a very clear part of that provision that says, in such a way as to avoid or minimize, minimize visual impacts as viewed from public roads, existing residential dwellings located on contiguous parcels. I think, I, I would say there's been some latecomers to this review. So I've, I, I hope that these comments are taken with a bit of a grain of salt when we're saying that we have disregarded the visual impacts. At the planning board's request, we did meet at the Goshay residence. And for folks that were at that site visit, we did, to the, I would say, the greatest extent practicable, offer them various screening that was also on their site that we would pay for or maintain. And then immediately on the property line, they ultimately deferred to the screening that we had landed on. So I, I do want to say, we did make every effort possible. The site is also surrounded by 360 degrees of existing vegetation. So we did account for that as well, and that is definitely a part of our siting consideration. I think also, I'll touch on just like, there's a, there's a lot of the code, and I encourage anyone, like, please go step by step, like, line by line. We are extremely confident that we have met all of those requirements and also the specific site plan requirements. But the first two are probably going to be good ones. So the community scale solar energy systems are allowed in the town of Ankrum, agricultural zoning district pursuant to site plan and special use permit approved by the planning board. So I just want to emphasize something we probably touched on a couple of times. This is the only underlying zone where this would be a permissible use. As far as alternatives, we've done an extensive alternative analysis, which is what is typical of an EIS if the project were to receive a positive declaration. We've also done three iterations of a visual impact assessment, which is now being reviewed, I would say, for the 3.5 round right now. So a, a lot of what we're looking at right now is what we would consider is typical of an EIS, and we'll continue to try and get the board the information they need to make an informed decision. The second provision under code G is just kind of a whole consensus here. After review and study, the town has determined that a solar energy system occupying 10 acres would have the capacity to generate energy sufficient to meet the energy needs of approximately 25% of the total number of housing units in Ankrum. Further, the town considers solar systems requiring more than 10 acres in scale to be incompatible with the town's environmental, farmland, local food production, and rural character priorities, as those priorities have been established and expressed in the town of Ankrum comprehensive plan. Therefore, community scale solar energy systems shall not exceed 10 acres in size, regardless of the maximum energy generating capacity of the system. The key part here is that any system requiring more than 10 acres in scale is considered incompatible with the town's environmental, farmland, local food production, rural character priorities. Insinuating a project that is under 10 acres in size would be compliant with those, even if there are some noted impacts resulting from that project. The size of itself would be compatible. That's directly from the code. So I just want to leave that there. I can probably bring up a million other different provisions specifically from that, but for the sake of keeping time, I just wanted to touch on that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi. My name is Dorina Sullivan, and my property is adjacent to the solar array field. Now that the corn and the leaves are down, I will see the arrays from my property. We were not considered at all in Rick's landscaping mitigation plan to address our view and would like to be considered in that plan.
Where are you specifically?
Excuse me?
Where are you?
My address is 3299 Route 82. My property butts right up next to the fields that are going to be the arrays. Not, not directly behind me, but two fields behind. No, I'm, yes, I'm west.
So you're opposite.
No, I'm on the same side as the arrays. Do you know where Mr. Goldberg lives? Okay, east side. You know where Mr. Goldberg lives? No.
You're in the woods. You're on the, just out of that field.
82, I'm the one who will see the poles all the time. She lives in back of me, right across the field, looking at the field.
Okay, my house is on the maps. All the map, my house is there. 3299.
But it's property between you.
I don't recall you.
No, there's fields, cornfields between me and the arrays.
But is that, is those fields the original moment? I'm just trying to get.
No, this is Miller, all Millerhurst Farm.
Her property line, but it's the Miller property line.
Yes.
Comes around, she comes around the hill. She goes up the top of the hill, I'm on the bottom, we both run over the side.
I got a map. This will help.
Okay.
Yeah, this is here, this is 82. This is the whole. Why, there's you, right? Here's me, yeah. So I will see. Well, I will see, will be the largest, and the worst, and this house. It is. It is. You have seen, I sort of find that. Yep, my property line, so. This is my property line, yeah, the line is small. Yeah, so I will see this. Because I'm high.
This, this going down the other way? We would probably, this upper, this is the upper, and then this was downhill.
This is your house. My, my house is in the. This, this slopes down, and this one kind of slopes like that.
Yeah, right.
And there is a bit of rubble here. So depending on where you are on my property, on my debt, I will see that. I, from my house, can see Doreen's, Rick's down. So we can see each other. We can both see. The leaves are on the trees, I couldn't see me now, I can definitely.
I haven't spoken up.
No, I haven't.
Okay, I just, we weren't ignoring you, but.
Yeah, we didn't know.
No.
Oh, I have no idea. I have no idea.
I have no idea where it is.
Well, it's in your drop.
Well, I.
Talk to this guy here.
Can I just finish?
Yeah, continue, I'm sorry. We just didn't know where you were.
That's okay. So also while.
All right, wait a minute, wait a minute. We need.
So also while driving along Route 82, the arrays will be in full view from the road, no matter what speed you're going. And you can see that now coming down 82. We, as a community, also still have many concerns with the decommissioning. 30 years through now, if the panels go that long, will Rick Energy be around to comply? And will any infrastructure be left behind, abandoned to further leach in the ground, making the land unfarmable, taking away from producing food? Small farms are wildlife habitats. When we lose farmland to solar developers, we're losing the land that feeds us and sustains the animals around us. I would like to encourage the board to continue the public meetings until all questions and answers are satisfied by both the town lawyer, the consultants, and the community members.
Just to let you know, there's a bond. Can we hold the applause? This is not a, there's a bond posted by the applicant if this gets approved to decommission the entire site. The town retains that. Every five years, you can increase the amount. So you will not be left.
Well. In 30 years.
Well, nobody knows what's going to happen in 30 years. The best plan we can put together is there's a bond.
I just wanted to just make a comment. You know, if we could just have the, kind of, we did this for Homeland Towers. You know, just let the public be able to speak, and then, you know, if Rick Energy has anything they'd like to add at the end, just to address all the comments. This way, it just kind of keeps the board's attention and, you know, the, the public hearings really for the public at this point. So anyway, I just wanted to just, because I saw it, Rob is here, so. Okay, okay, I understand. I just didn't want to have a back and forth, because this is really for you to be able to understand the comment.
All right, all right, wait a minute, we gotta, wait a minute.
Wait.
We're not going to do this if everybody's arguing. All right. Do you want to come up and take your turn?
Look, look, we don't need any side comments here. Ma'am.
Can we please stop?
Please, we're going to have to ask you to leave if you don't buy it down. This is a public meeting, we have to conduct it as such. Go ahead, sir.
I'll be quick. My name is Dan Haas, and I'm co-founder and co-chair of Friends of Columbia Solar, a group formed about four years ago to support the Shepherd's Run project in Kopek and more broadly in the county in general. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the proposed Millerhurst project here in Ankrum. I live in Kopek, but I think I can explain why I have a stake in the project. The arguments against the Millerhurst farm echo concerns voiced in Kopek, despite the fact that Ankrum's project is about 4% the size of Shepherd's Run. The project is described as industrial. This adjective is used against solar projects across the country. But consider that since the founding of the town, Ankrum has been the site of an iron works and now a paper mill in the middle of the village, which everyone seems to accept and be proud of. Another argument is that it will remove valuable farmland. The reality is the farm fields so beloved by locals and visitors are increasingly unprofitable. Farming is hard. Landowners say they need the money the solar field will provide in order to make ends meet. And finally, the project will tarnish the town's character. Character is a, is a subjective term. I believe Kopek and Ankrum will show their character by stepping up to take action against the gravest threat to the planet, climate change. Its effects increase every year, every season. Nine acres of solar won't save the earth. But if enough communities allow projects this size, it will make a difference. I hope the planning board will see the Millerhurst project from the perspective of the planet as a whole and let it happen. Thank you.
Can, can I just ask you a question, sir? Could you? Kopek, how large is that farm?
225 acres of solar panels and.
Did that go through the local municipality?
Because of the size of it, it's, it's subject to CLCPA laws, which can override town laws. So Kopek has laws similar to yours, but the size of the project was in a different category.
Because it's so large.
Yeah.
You're telling me the town had no control over?
Not no control, but little control. The, the state, the state decided with the CLCPA law too, that the, the need for renewable energy would override town law. I can't remember the exact wording, but where was, where was necessary? So to be fair, Kopek's town law will be overridden in, I don't know, maybe 10 different points. But, but this, this project is a different category altogether.
So they, there were no planning board meetings on the, on the application? It just?
Oh, there have been planning meetings, yeah. It's been going on for four years now. But Orez will decide whether they're going to issue a draft, a draft permit this month, actually in just a couple of weeks hopefully. And then I'll begin a year's process of hearings and.
But this project is there.
This project is.
Existing.
No.
No, 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 it's proposed.
Okay, there is, there is one in Kopek.
Yeah, it's a long story, but it's been, it was originally proposed seven years ago, and it's been four years since it's been really in process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Spread over 708. Property values in the area are starting to drop.
I, I, yeah, just curious what it was, that's all.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to put comments, I think the gentleman from Rick gave the impression that any project smaller than 10 acres had to be approved under the law. That was accurate. That was accurate.
That's all I wanted to say, is that a smaller, that this board's job, as this board knows, is to review these projects and, and assess the impacts. And the fact that it is within the boundaries of the law does not make it an acceptable project. If it has impacts that hurt the community, which this project does.
If it wasn't within the boundaries of the law, it wouldn't be here, and that's what we're doing, we're reviewing.
Correct, correct, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? That's it. Okay, back to the board.
I do have a question.
I don't know that I need this. I just have a question, so.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, happy to. Just, just to clarify, well, you, you, you made the comment that the, um, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't permitted under the code, but we have to regardless. It is permitted under the code. But the, I just wanted to ask the question, we've had this discussion tonight. Um, my understanding is that the landscape architect is going to come back before the next meeting. Um, there's no other outstanding issues for the board, so the expectation would be that the board would be prepared to issue, uh, secret determination, uh, at the next meeting.
Can't, can't comment to that at this point.
What are, what are the other outstanding items?
We, we still have to deal with the Viewshed review from our zone. And we have conflicting Viewshed analysis. And camera sizes and lens sizes and all kinds of very technical stuff. So we have to work our way through that with the help of our consultant. So I don't have an answer to when we're going to make a negative deck or positive deck.
We've got the funds yet to give them the approvals to start the reviews.
So the, the VIA consultant, whoever that is, and the landscape architect, they're, they're not working right now?
No, we're waiting on a check. The town board didn't feel comfortable signing contracts with these two additional consultants.
Yeah.
Until the town had the money in hand. Apparently, there must be a check lost in the mail because we're being told it's been on the way for two weeks.
I mean, I, I can't speak to the escrow issue, but we can, we can.
I'm just telling you the facts, I'm not trying to put you off.
No, 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 you're not. I don't know.
And I don't, that's out of my control.
Same here. But so with respect to the, um, the next steps then, what I was trying to understand was, if the visual impact consultant is going to res, provide a report to the board, the, that person or that firm isn't doing anything until some escrow check is received? Okay, I, all I'm trying to do is clarify next steps. I'm not arguing or advocating or.
Well, you're asking when we're approving it, basically, and that's.
Well, no, I mean, Nan will tell you this, I mean, it's funny, Nan was at a conference on Secret today, so she'll tell you this, that the secret determination is made in a proceeding at the earliest stage possible. And so this board can make a secret determination. I mean, the impacts with a nine acre solar project are such that you can look at the reports that are submitted, you can make a determination on the basis of the reports. So, uh, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, but the board's already walked through the part two, I believe. Nan has done a report with respect to the part three, so there should be enough information for the board to act on secret if it desired. To the extent that you're going to wait for the VIA report from the consultant.
I, I disagree with you. Without the visual being clarified for us, I don't think we're making a determination.
That, that was my question.
It's too sensitive an issue, and I'm, I don't know what I'm seeing or not seeing, for wherever we're supposed to be seeing it.
Understood.
But I think a lot of the other board members feel the same.
Yeah, honestly, I. It, it's more a question of what, what's left, and so if it's the VIA consultant, that's, yeah, understood.
You know, I see arrows on a plan that point from here to there, saying you can see it. Am I seeing this?
Yeah.
Or am I seeing the whole solar array?
Yeah, I don't know that the, the consultant will come back and say, you, we were talking earlier about what's considered significant adverse impact. I don't know that they'll make a conclusion for you, because ultimately, they'll give you the facts, right? They'll help you.
That's what we're looking for.
And then you guys will make the conclusion with respect to that.
Because I drive the roads, and I, I've driven the, I've driven the roads, and I can't make a determination.
I just wanted to understand what was outstanding. Oh, oh, sure, my name is Jim Moscato, I'm from the law firm of Young Summer, I think you met my colleague Kristen Pratt at the last meeting, so I'm happy to address the, the board.
Yeah, right, got it? Okay.
That, that was all, you answered my question, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, back to the board. Oh, okay, well, when I asked, you didn't stand up, so.
All right, let's. Into a lot of people at the meeting today, people from out of town and all kinds of stuff. There's a lot of conversation about the visual impact, and I know that we've talked about that like extensively, and I know you're waiting for, um, and it's great to have a impartial third party take a look at it, and I think that's critical, and, and I think that they should be advising you, and I think it's wonderful. And I think the reason why we find ourselves in this position is because from the beginning, as Ms. Malik mentioned, uh, back in that very original November twenty twenty-four site plan, and VIA, that, uh, that Rick just did not do their due diligence, and I think that's why we find ourselves in this position, and that's why they've come back and had to redo things, because they didn't take care to do it correctly the first time, and they chose to ignore things that were inconvenient for them. I know you have a copy of my September twenty-five, uh, note, which I affectionately called my Where's Waldo presentation, uh, and I go in there and I can, I explain it in depth in there, so you can review that if you feel like it. Um, but keeping with the visual theme, and now knowing that a landscape architect is going to also be involved, I think that's going to be really critical. And my husband wrote a note, and he submitted it this week to the board, uh, but he's going to let me read it, because I have. Oh, yeah, that's right. Do you have this, since you have access to Rick's presentation? Um, maybe you could put our letter up on the screen too, so that everyone on Zoom could see it. The letter is called eleven five twenty-five, ineffectiveness of Rick something screening. And it's in, it was submitted to the board, and I think you had a copy of it in your folder, hard copy. It's in drop. I appreciate it. That's true, and yeah, while we're reading, I just wanted to make a comment about the community solar and the potential to serve Ankrum customers. And I think it's really wonderful that that is available actually today. Um, because if you go to Central Hudson's website, Central Hudson will show you a link of how to access existing community solar projects if you choose to procure community solar for your residence. And I went there myself, and I checked it out, and it takes you to a link, um, on the Nicertis site. And when you put in your zip code, it tells you what all of the community solar, uh, available generators are in your area and which ones are available to you, and so, uh, we signed up. Uh, so next month, I should be getting a new bill, uh, from a provider called Arcadia. And we'll see how much my energy cost savings are. You know, I'm going to see, my very first bill should come next month, so we're looking forward to it, and perhaps we'll be back in December with our bills, so that we can talk about real numbers and real savings for real customers who can procure community solar today. Were you able to bring up the file? Nope, that's not it, it's a one piece, it's one letter.
No, when I save them, I have to save the email separately from the attachment, so it's in Dropbox, it's two pieces. The importance.
Just that, gotcha. Sure. I heard a happy ding.
I don't know.
It's, it's a letter. And in Dropbox, oh, right, but if you, if you sign up for the account. Sure, in Dropbox.
Can you read it for us?
Yeah, I'll read it. All right. I'll get to it. All right, so, dear planning board, I was pleased to learn that the board has elected to engage a landscape consultant. Turn the phone. To review Rick's screening proposal for our home. At the appropriate time, I would be happy to invite their representatives to meet with us on our property to assess the terrain challenges in person, as this will surely assist them in their forthcoming review. Per your ten twenty-nine working meeting and numerous public hearings on this topic, it is clear that the visual impact of the proposed industrial Ankrum solar array is a major concern of our broader community. I've heard Rick Energy states several times that they came to our home to discuss screening, and now feel they have satisfied us with their proposed landscaping plan. On October the third, the New Pine Plains Herald reported on the September twenty-fifth planning board meeting at which Rick Energy participated. In it, the author of the article cites Rick project manager Rob Quirolo. Quirolo said only one property abutted the solar site, and then quote, "We met with the homeowner and provided the landscape screening they asked for," he said. After being curiously omitted, which is in this letter, from Rick's original November twenty twenty-four visual impact assessment, my husband and I did in fact meet with Mr. Quirolo at our home back in the spring of twenty twenty-five, and several board members were present there. As laypeople who have never negotiated with an international energy development company before, and unaware at the time of Rick's legal requirements per the Ankrum solar law for dot M, the solar energy system shall be located and maximally screened within five years in such a way as to avoid or minimize visual impacts as viewed from existing residential dwellings located on contiguous parcels. We believed that their evergreen screening offer was better than nothing. Now, however, after attending numerous planning board meetings, reading the local laws, and hearing from experts like town consultant Nan Stoltenberg, we much better understand Rick's obligations to neighbors like us, and strongly disagree that Rick's proposed solution is acceptable. I actually countered Mr. Quirolo's assertion in my comment to the New Pine Plains Herald article on October thirteenth. In it, I noted, due to the, to the sloping terrain, the new saplings, seven feet tall, will also be planted at a significantly lower grade level than our home, rendering them nearly useless for screening, and failing to meet the legal requirement for achieving maximum coverage within five years. I also point out the not so inconsequential fact that per the site plan, the area identified for these plantings appears to be outside of the lease area that Rick has with the Millers for this array project, and you can view that on the site plan. What Rick has never shared with this planning board or the community is a cross-sectional view of the topography from our property to the two array sections showing, showing just how high the trees would have to be to avoid or minimize visual impacts as viewed from our home. Again, per Rick's own September twenty twenty-five site plan, see the plant schedule on page C four oh two, the seven-foot evergreens proposed to screen our home are expected to reach a maximum height of fifteen to seventeen feet in five years. However, according to my rudimentary calculations, even this optimistic projection will fall far short of the required height to provide adequate screening. As shown in the picture below. Cue picture below, thank you. I can be seen still holding a standard four-foot level to create a reasonably accurate scale and provide context to this landscape. It certainly appears that seven-foot saplings planted downhill, uh, in the picture below that, there's a blue arrow showing downhill. Behind our property line, the stone wall, even after reaching their Rick projected five-year height of fifteen to seventeen feet, will not really provide any useful screening from the acres of array panels built on the field facing our home indicated with those red arrows. Rick frequently repeats their false claim that they meet screening requirements without any onsite analysis to back it up. We certainly look forward to the expert opinion of landscape consultant firm Wagner Hodgson to review Rick's proposal. We are confident that once they study the situation, they will recognize the inadequacy of Rick's current screening proposal. Thank you, board, for your continued careful review of Rick's application. Paul and Andrea Gashke of four fifty Woods Court. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
One of the comments about the decommissioning is that there's a bond available. We all understand that, and that's, makes a lot of sense, and it's required. The, we've had our expert, who happened to be a waste expert, uh, review that and ask the question of that, having them demonstrate that those panels are not considered hazardous waste, they have provided no information, uh, confirming that. If they are deemed hazardous waste, they can't go into a landfill, and the cost will be many times what they have proposed. So I, I request that they provide that information so we can assess it. And if the bond has to be five times what they posted, then so be it.
Yeah, the estimate is in the Dropbox, I believe, it's, it's been part of the application.
Uh, Jeffrey Baker, I'm, uh, a resident on Pools Hill and, uh, owner of Hill Rock Farm and Distillery.
Robert, do you have anything about the tox city, uh, tox city of the panel? Did you, you have something in writing that you can give us?
Yeah, we, you provided.
I know. Yes, please, that, to satisfy.
Yeah, our consultant asked for a very specific piece of information, determination, that it is not hazardous waste. That should be provided, provided.
Yes.
The consultant was unaware of the model being.
If, if you could just provide us with that information so we could pass it on to our engineer. Okay. Okay, that being said. Somebody on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we've, uh, discussed this at length this evening again. I, our next meeting is going to be December fourth. Hopefully, we will have the consultants that we're waiting for to be online with us. And I guess we'll continue then. If we don't have them online, then I don't know if it pays even. Okay. All right. So as of this evening, the next meeting is December fourth, which this application will be on. So, anything else from the board?
Yeah, we need a motion to continue the public hearing.
All in favor? Aye. That will be continued in December. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Number one, I apologize. You I never got any any notice. You needed something in writing for me. Actually, I met with the zoning enforcement officer late April, early May and looked over the the maps of the area. And I told him at that time, it looked good. It just needs to follow New York State Fire Code. And quite honestly, I'm going to tell you guys right now, that's mine and our district's position. It's got, we're not going to give you any exception. It's got to meet New York State Fire Code. That's what we want. So if you need a blanket letter from me saying everything needs to be that, that's what it is. But we want it to be fire code.
That's all we were waiting for to hear that it was coming from the fire chief. We do.
I met with him in May.
We need things in writing.
So thank you for sending the letters over immediately. Anything else this evening?
Yeah, oh, yeah, let's talk about. Yep. So I don't know if I have everything that you guys did while I was gone, but and I know Joe, you did some recently.
Yeah, I did a lot of recent.
Yeah. So can you just like send me the proof that you did them?
Soon as I get it.
I have one that we did in February when I was here and then I want you to in October. And those are the two we've done with Colleen? Yeah, okay.
So then she just proposed another one.
Right on the twenty-fifth of November, which is a Tuesday. And then she wants to know if we want it in person or on Zoom or both. If you guys could send me anything you did while I was gone, I will update what everyone needs. At this point, the only person who has satisfied them according to my spreadsheet is Pollard. And that's because she got to go to all of the ZBA trainings while I was gone. Yeah, I think that that's the one from October eight.
There was one from August without column.
Uh, yeah, I got yours. Yeah, you, yeah. I did. I did see that. Just didn't write it. But I do have it in the email. So anybody else who's done things outside of here, please send it to us.
Yeah, I have three from Colleen, three and a half from Columbia Community College.
Okay.
Last week and I have and I have six from Pace.
Can you send us a email?
Yes, I will. So I have three and a half, six.
Yes, you're good. I just like I need to write it down to show people.
Okay.
Okay, so are we fucking in on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah. But do we want it in person or in Zoom or in bulk?
Um, I think Colleen said that in person is good and on Zoom, you can do both or?
We had we have the options of either or both.
You can't.
It's the Tuesday before day.
You got your Can you be here or?
And we can also record it.
Well, let's see about the email because the board's not here. That's true.
I can't do the twenty-fifth. I already told Colleen I had a major presentation and then a location. So I won't be here.
We can always, if we pick that day, we can always record it and you guys can.
Yeah, I have plenty of credit, so.
Yeah, right. And tell me something you learned and then I'll know you did it. Go back to those roots. Um, that's all I have. We just need a motion to adjourn.
And I get a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.